Good evening. Welcome to the 2017-18 school year. Here we are. And also, welcome to our board meeting, September 11, 2017. Can we have a roll call, please?
Here.
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 Here, thank you. All right, the first item on the agenda is approval of minutes from the April 24, 2017 regular meeting and the May 1, 2017 special meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. All right, so next item is written communication. Do we have any written communication, Dr. Beavis?
We have no written communication at this time.
All right, thank you. So we're already at information, item number six, recognition of DECA international qualifiers.
Yes, and we have Dr. Levy and... Dr. Levy and Dr. Beavis, you're both doing it or just one of you?
Yeah, I'll do the update on the ACT, that's where we are.
Okay, I'm gonna give a quick intro.
Yep.
Okay. So, as you know, every year we get the ACT and when we do the annual achievement report later in the fall, usually near the end of October, at that time, we give you a full analysis of a number of data points and information. And, but we have in recent years also brought you the ACT comparison report because we do get our general composite scores that are released to the public, and there've already been articles around the country about the most recent ACT scores that are released, they were released either last Thursday or Friday, the embargo was lifted. And we always feel, you know, as soon as the embargo's lifted, we should at least make it a matter of public record for the board, and then you'll actually get the disaggregated report and all of that later on, and in fact, we don't even have that information yet. They always just send the aggregate first and the other comes later. So with that, Pete, if you would, so obviously not a big, long achievement report, but we'd like to just give you the big picture.
Okay, so I like to call this the more to come report, sort of like a teaser trailer at the movie theater. So here you see the, I'm just gonna go through the subtest briefly. Again, this is the last time, this is the last cohort that we administered the ACT to during school hours. We had over, you know, 93, 94% take it, and then even more than that because it's the best of. So our baseline again was over 92, 93% of the senior classes represented in these numbers, and it's probably actually higher than that when we get down to it. You see our subtest score in English was a 23, and that's our, it goes all the way back to 2012, although we actually have data going back 40 years. Math ACT sub-score is a 23.4. Again, the ACT is scored on a 1 to 36 range, you'll see a 23.4 is a slight increase over last year. Anytime you increase an ACT score two tenths of a point, it's fairly difficult to do. You'll see our reading ACT is a 23.6. If you look historically, back to 2012, we were at 22.9. Again, snapshots. Science, we're at 23, which is the second highest in recent memory. Our composite is a 23.4, which is the, well, drumroll. There you go, it's the third highest ACT score going back to 1973. So, I also have to indicate that in 2013, scores are reported for all students, including extended time. That was the first time that all students' scores counted in the composite score. Prior to that, students with accommodations and extended time were not included in the total. So everything to the left of 2013 was not a full picture of the students' testing. Next, I have a little snapshot of the ACT benchmarks. At ETHS, 70% of our graduating seniors last year met the ACT college readiness benchmark in English. And I just have the comparison, again, we're gonna do, we could do more detailed reporting on this, but this is just a quick snapshot. You see the Illinois average was 66%. In math, we were at 57, the state average was 44. These are the percentage of students scoring at or above the benchmark, which is a 50% chance of getting a C or a B or better, and a 75% chance of getting a C or better in credit-bearing freshman courses for students who've taken the ACT and go on to college. You'll see here the college readiness benchmark for reading is 58%. In Illinois, it is 48. In science, we see 54% of ETHS students meeting that benchmark compared to 39% in Illinois. That benchmark score is set at a 23, that's the highest of all the benchmarks to meet. Now, what we do is, what the ACT reports on in the next slide is typically a very misleading slide. So what's on the next slide is the percentage of students who met all four. So that means you were able to meet all four, including the science, and that number was 46%, and in Illinois, that's 30. This is typically the slide that, the data point that is used in the Tribune when they say only 30% of students are ready for college in Illinois. But we know that more than 46% of students go on to college at ETHS and do quite well. So, again, 46% met all four of those benchmarks, but we know, again, that many more than 46% of our graduating seniors go off to college and are successful. So, I think the big headline here, if I may, is that red line, is, that red line going across is set at 23, and you see a nice cluster of scores of 23 or higher going back at least at least 10 years. I wanna say it's 10-year trend?
'08.
'08. Amazing how you could pick, I'd softball that. So yeah, since '08, we've been above 23. And we've kind of bounced around at the top of that distribution up there. So we're at 23.4 right now, which is the third highest. So more to come, and more detailed reporting on the way. But I wanted to share this because you'll probably see it in the paper, in the Tribune, or maybe some national coverage around ACT scores. It is the time when those are released.
Great, thank you. Questions? Gotcha.
Maybe more of a comment. But yes, I have actually seen the news already reported in a variety of sources because everything hits the online stuff. And in a link to one of the articles, I thought one of the interesting takeaways, I'd just be curious about your reaction to this particular point and how it might relate to our situation here at ETHS, is that the ACT, apparently, when they do an analysis that looks at underserved students, what, who they term to be underserved, and there are three factors that they look at in determining whether a student is underserved. Whether the students are from low-income families, whether they belong to a quote, "social minority group," or would be the first in their families to attend college. And under their analysis, the more of those three criteria they meet, the less likely they are to meet the benchmarks. And in fact, I, you know, it was pretty striking. So if you look at that analysis, more than half of the students who are not underserved will meet three out of four of those benchmarks. And that doesn't seem particularly surprising, but it's, and again, maybe not surprising, but certainly not good and not right, that only 9% of students who meet those three underserved criteria are able to meet three of the four benchmarks. So I'm curious about, because this is the, that's the news that's making the headlines, I think, in the newspapers when we talk about this nationally. So I'm just sort of curious about, what's your take on that, and how does that look here, where we're trying to focus on equity?
So first, I'll say, I'm not particularly surprised by that, that number nationally. I would say that it'd be great if we could, you know, and we don't have the data file yet, so we can't cut it, slice it, and dice it that way, but that would be a great way to kind of see how we're measuring up. The trick would be to figure out the first-generation piece. I think that might be a challenge, but we might be able to do that with the questionnaire.
How do they get it?
They might do it self-reported off the questionnaire.
And then they don't share that with the schools?
No, it's shared, but there's no, just because you self-report it, doesn't mean it's true. But that would be the only caveat I would have to that. And then I think you could, you could figure out, you know, based on the net. But if you're looking at a national dataset and you're saying, if you have these three criteria, you say first-generation college going, you say low income, and the other one was, help me out.
Social minority.
Social minority with whatever, whatever that definition is, whatever they're using, I think you would see a challenge.
I think they, somewhere else, I read a description, black, Hispanic, American Indian, not Asian. I feel like they didn't include, I could be wrong about that, but...
So no, if we look at those three factors, it's another filter to put on the report, but that would be, would definitely inform the conversation, especially when we're talking about our post-secondary outcomes and looking at how kids persist into college.
So maybe when we do this deeper, we can reflect back on that.
Thank you, yeah.
Jonathan?
Well, I just wanted to comment that I've seen some of those same headlines, and the headlines scream, "Oh my God, the achievement gap is worse than we thought." Well, duh, you know, it's like, I mean, I feel like we're at least somewhat ahead of the curve here in our recognition of that, which seemed to be a revelation for a lot of the national media. I had one question going forward, which is, now that we're switching to the SAT, will there be a way of sort of continuing this line forward by somehow translating our SAT score into what, into the old ACT?
You know, I'm gonna punt on that to my partner, Carrie, and when she talks to us when we do the achievement report, and the only reason I'm gonna do that is, I don't know exactly how concordance tables work, so I'm not prepared to answer that tonight. But I'm sure when we come back with a more deeper report, we could certainly...
But your question's a good one, and to a certain degree, and for anybody listening in who, again, didn't catch it, this will be the last year that we have a full ACT report. We'll still have some students self-selected take the ACT, but we'll have no other point of comparison. So we were kind of glad, at least composite-wise, to go out on one of ETHS's highest notes because there is a line there now, and how, you know, how we go forward with that and what kind of comparisons we might be able to make. It gets a little dicier.
Well, and actually, this is a national issue because they changed the SAT test, too.
Yes.
So there's multiple levels of change that we're gonna be dealing with. So it'll be interesting to see if you can make apples and somewhat oranges work as pears, or I don't know, you know?
So maybe we're working on our next 44-year trip.
Exactly.
It will be interesting because the SAT is very different, it's very different, so I've heard. So I don't know even what the patterns will be in terms of how students will score.
I mean, the other thing is, like, when we're looking at concordance tables, you have to do this chart the correct way and convert it, you would have to look at those tables from 1973 or whatever, I mean, I, maybe we can figure that out.
I'll stick with my term, dicey.
Yeah, it could be dicey. All right, other questions? If not, thank you very much. Appreciate it. So I'm gonna go back because I was working on, I was working from an old agenda, and I'm not sure how that came up on my computer. I told William, "Oh, I got it." But no, I got, I got this, so I was using...
Well, that's why I stuttered a little.
So the dates, yes, so the dates, so I'm going back. Everything, our agendas tend to start the same way, thank goodness. However, we have to approve the minutes from the August 14 meeting, not April and May.
I thought you were just doing like May and August.
But I love how everybody did it. Thank you, colleagues. Okay, so approval of minutes of the August 14, 2017 meeting. May I have a...
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes, okay, thank you very much. All right, so that gave us time for the next item to be set up. And the next item is our policy first reading, and who's gonna lead this?
I'll do a little intro real fast. So board, routinely, about every quarter, we bring you these updates, and we're bringing it to you again, and you've received it. We normally don't have a panel of four people with additional people from the staff in attendance in case there are more questions. But one of these policies in particular deserves more attention and more explanation because, quite frankly, we are very pleased to bring it to you, but we want you to understand why we're bringing it to you. So with that, I don't know quite, Pete, how you wanted to approach this, but I know at some point you want to get into that, and maybe since we put it first, maybe begin with that one? Okay.
So what we'll do is, we will start with 6190, and we're entitling this presentation, ensuring equitable access in extracurricular activities, activity participation at ETHS. And I already botched the title, but you get it. And then what we'll do is, then we'll fold in the policy 95 update after that, so we'll do them separately. But I'm gonna turn this over to Marcus, he's gonna start us off.
All right. Good evening. So here at ETHS, we have been examining a lot of our institutional procedures and practices, and trying to figure out how do we get more students of color involved and participating, et cetera. So during a pilot review, which we do every year, we try to look for things that could enhance the student experience, and as we worked, looked this summer, along with the dress code and some other work, we discovered board policy 6.190 that has in it the 2.0 requirement for extracurricular participation. And we were looking at ways to really figure out, how do we work with you to change that to have more students participate in extracurriculars and athletics? So we wanted to talk a little bit about why we think this decision needs to be made and some next steps in the process. So this is our attempt to do that. So we know that the academic program at ETHS enhances and builds student competencies and life outcomes, but we also know that involvement in extracurriculars do the same. And so when Nicole Boyd and Chris Levatino come to you every year, they talk about participation, and we all believe that being involved in extracurricular, co-curricular activities is a plus and enhances that experience. And that's pretty much what we're seeing in the slide here, and it doesn't matter what a student chooses to do after ETHS, whatever that avenue is, you know, both the academic program and the extracurricular program provides students with the skills to be able to do that. So if we look at strictly at extracurriculars, we have, Nicole reports on this every year, but she reports from it from a different perspective. We're showing you here, just with this one slide, that we have about 1,000 students who are not participating in extracurriculars. And you can see the percentages broken down by race there. So we want to have more students of color participating in extracurriculars, and we're gonna talk a little bit about why we are recommending this to you, and what the actual recommendation is and what it is not, okay? So we know that there's some perceptions out there that we would like to address.
All right, my turn. So, you know, when we looked at 6190, you know, we figured that consistent with our mission and our district goals 1 and 2, which I'll review in a little bit, and our equity purposes, school leaders are proposing to increase equitable access to all extracurricular activities, and we recommend that we remove the existing board policy requiring that students, quote, "shall have a grade-point average for the semester prior to participation of 2.0." The 2.0 requirement creates a systemic barrier for students who wish to try out, audition, and/or sign up and participate, and here's the key, in any activity, in any activity, and/or sports at ETHS. In our research on this, we also found out that the 2.0 requirement, there's a tension with the existing board policy 710 that states that no student shall, based on sexual or sex, sexual orientation or gender identity, be denied equal access to programs, activities, services, or benefits, or be limited in the exercise of any rights, privileges, advantages, or denied equal access to educational or extracurricular programs and activities. If you don't have a 2.0, you can't be in our GSA-plus club. So that, so if you don't have a 2.0, you can't access one of the activities that is a support for our students. So that's just one example of a tension that exists already, and I wanted to highlight that tension because if we don't highlight that tension, then we fail to see the full landscape here. We also want to revise the policy to state the eligibility to participate in all extracurricular activities, and sports be based on adherence. We're gonna, we really believe that that Evanston Township Extracurricular Activity Code, it outlines all the expectations for behavior and conduct, we want to maintain that. But we also want to recognize that one of the values of extracurricular participation is the increased engagement in school life and academics, and recognize that all activity participants dedicate some amount of time outside of school in order to participate. Update the board policy to reflect that any student participating in extracurricular and co-curricular activities in sports will have access to academic supports. We think that academic support piece is really important, we want to underscore that, and we're gonna talk about that a little bit later. But really, the idea that we want every student who participates in these extracurriculars, whether they're sports or extracurricular activities, to have direct access to academic supports, and if you are on an athletic team and you're not meeting the IHSA requirement, that those be targeted academic supports. And you see that point four is to revise the board policy to reflect academic eligibility requirements mandated for students participating in IHSA activities and athletics. And that indicate in the policy that students who are in jeopardy of not meeting those will be connected to supports. The specific supports and practices of the IHSA will be issued at the administrative level, not in board policy. So again, we will work on the procedures that go around this to ensure that we have direct supports for our athletes who are, who fall below the current 2.0 or are struggling with their five, with their IHSA eligibilities. And we also want to highlight that many of these academic supports are already in place, and that there are some enhancements to those supports that we're gonna talk about in a minute. And I just want to point out District Goal 1, which is our equitable and excellent education goal, and to draw our attention to the outcome of 100% college and career workforce-ready and/or independent. And again, to draw our distinction here that recognizes that racism is the most devastating factor contributing to the diminished achievement of our students, and that we strive to eliminate that predictability of academic achievement based upon race. We also strive to eliminate that predictability of academic achievement based upon income, disability, and status as English-language learner. So this is completely in alignment with that. We're also in alignment to District Goal 2, which is student well-being. And as you see here, just as a reminder, and Ty is gonna walk us through those outcomes and present the case for that alignment as well.
All right, so when we're looking at desired outcome, and we are looking specifically at Goal 1, the 100% of students college-ready, workforce-ready, and/or independent, we know that in terms of enhancing learning opportunities beyond the classroom, because we're focused first and foremost on the classroom, and not reducing our expectations and maintaining that level of rigor and accountability, but also recognizing that students, just like us, are complicated, and all the critical knowledge, the skills, attitudes that go into things like their ICAPS, their individualized career and academic plans, show those positive attributes. One student said recently, who's in Students Organized Against Racism, that we are more than just our GPAs. And we know that we all recognize that our students are complicated and have so many positive attributes that at times may not be reflected in their GPAs, but can be supported to reengage in increasing their academic performance. With regard to our Goal 2, and looking at reframing our extracurricular participation, we're looking at trying for that 100% of students really being present, and we see that students engaged in extracurriculars is really a way as an intervention. Sometimes we see that as the end goal, and some people have defined it that way. That isn't the way we've treated it or are approaching this. The end goal is academic engagement, that the extracurricular activity is an intervention strategy to reengage students in the school community. We mentioned here school avoidance because we know that traditionally, we define school avoidance as something that stereotypically we see as students shutting down, right? Refusing even to walk in the building. But as clinicians and as school staff have redefined school avoidance, we know that's often actually disengagement, right? Disengagement as a school community member, disengagement from the school classroom and from doing work. So we wanted to make sure to note that difference. When we're thinking about behavior referrals, we, as Pete had already emphasized, really want to think about the safety and well-being of all students. And this is, again, where we come back to accountability, where we come back to high standards with regard to behavior and engagement with each other in terms of our good decision-making and in terms of both our early interventions and our preventative focus as we are really building our multi-tiered systems of supports and thinking more at the tier-one preventative level. When we're looking at both the desired outcomes of 100% of our students maintaining or increasing GPA, as well as social-emotional wellness, including access to appropriate social-emotional supports, we have worked and will continue to work to expand our early at-risk indicators used by grade-level teams, and this is something that we're doing across the board, and again, really focusing on access for all students and getting early intervention in whatever fashion we can find that. We have been pretty successful in increasing access in our AP and our honors, and we have continued to think about, what are the different interventions and what are our current practices that might not be congruent with our commitments around equity and around increasing our access for all students? So we really wanted to note our expanding early intervention, our supports for all students, including our variety of programming, such as students who may not have engaged in school otherwise, in alt-school. I know we gave a report last year where many students have engaged and felt a sense of community, and they had been disengaged from the school community experience, including from extracurricular activities as a result of their GPAs. And in terms of our ombudsman and our credit recovery courses as pass/fail courses that are not GPA-bearing. So we really want to think through, what are our systems that are supporting this? We also wanted to note, in terms of our 100% participation, we want to increase access for all students. So what we've come down to when we talk about our students being engaged in extracurriculars is that the more eyes are on you, the better off you are. The more we wrap around students together, not just by our grade-level team members, not just by our psychologists and our social workers and our academic advisors, but by the team of people who know that you're really dedicated to this interest, to this art or this craft. And so we know that the more people who are doing that, the better the student is gonna do. We also know that our current GPA requirement can create a barrier for students' access, that sense of membership, that sense of belonging, and we know that even a student with all Cs and one C-minus in the previous semester would not be eligible to engage in extracurricular activities with our current GPA requirement. Ultimately, our commitment is to focus on enhancing learning for all students and deliberately use our equity lens to eliminate barriers and examine how we can create more access and maintain... access and maintain and increase our high expectations for all students.
Uh, in terms of next steps, we would look at, um, obviously monitoring, uh, closely monitoring our progress, closely monitoring, uh, both our attendance and, uh, our academic outcomes, our current athletic GPA and things like that, to make sure that this, uh, this is in fact working, uh, and, uh, we would, we would also revisit it from time to time and, um, close the loop on that. That's where we are.
Could you, are you done?
Yes.
Could you repeat again, though? Because it's not like we're removing something with nothing else in mind. I know it was up there. What are we proposing and why would we propose that?
I will, uh, tell you exactly the language we're proposing. It's in the pack, but I want, I'll read it, uh, into the records that we all have, uh, an agreement of what we're proposing. Uh, we're looking at the academic criteria for participation, and we're saying that to be eligible to participate in all extracurricular and co-curricular activities in sports, all students shall observe the rules and regulations of the Evanston Township High School Extracurricular Activity Code. That's bullet one. Bullet two, every student participating in extracurricular and co-curricular activities and supports will have access to academic supports. Bullet three, to be eligible to participate in IHSA activities and athletics, students shall meet the IHSA requirements. Students in jeopardy of not meeting IHSA eligibility requirements will be directly connected to targeted academic supports. Bullet four, any student participant failing to meet the academic criteria for participation shall be suspended from the activity until the specified academic criteria are met. And finally, the superintendent will develop procedures to implement this policy.
So for many, many years, we've had the current IHSA requirement. What is that requirement in the state of Illinois?
Do you have that right there?
So the, the current, um, IHSA regulation is passing five classes in the previous semester and passing five classes currently.
And how common is that in Illinois high schools?
In our experience, that is universally accepted as the bar, um, in terms of setting expectation for engagement in extracurriculars.
So anecdotally, it's almost universal, correct? Okay.
Uh, and I'll also add that we will have a GPA benchmark to trigger academic supports, right? So if a student is falling, uh, below a two point oh GPA, that will be a trigger for an intervention by coaches, so, so, uh, social workers, psychologists, and all personnel involved. Um, and we're developing some language for our own internal practices around, um, you know, giving them an opportunity to try out, to participate, but if they fall below that two point oh, they cannot play or compete, right? And IHSA sports and activities. Thank you.
And what you just said, Marcus, goes beyond IHSA and the universality of the, of their requirements.
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Take a minute, take it all in?
Well, you, we should mention that the policy committee did have a meeting around this already.
Yeah, so the policy committee had a meeting and, and, you're right, and talked about this and listened to what you had to say and asked lots of questions. Pat was there, Pat Munsell, Gretchen and I participated in that meeting last week. All right, um, so Jonathan?
It seems to me that the most important thing that I've heard tonight is Ty's point about this is an, this is an intervention. And it, it seems to me that we, we believe that participation in extracurricular activities enhances academic engagement and ultimately academic success. And what we're doing here is essentially testing that belief, um, so that we are, we are saying, you know, so even if you take sort of the worst indictment of this policy, it's lowering academics, let's assume that were true, that what we're doing is testing to see if by being more inclusive in extracurricular activities, we can in fact confirm our belief that academic achievement will, uh, improve. And it seems to me that it's worth the try, that is, that it's worth the test, and as, as Dr. Beva said, we're going to be monitoring it, we're going to be checking to see if in fact it pans out. But it seems to me that viewing it as an academic intervention, it's, it's certainly, um, a step worth trying.
Pat?
Um, so I, I applaud this. I think this is great, because I think we all know that we want to connect with every single kid in the building, and especially kids who are, you know, on the line in terms of their academic performance and achievement. And so I think doing this is really critical, um, to making sure that that happens, that we do make those connections. And I, I think the way you framed it to build in this constant monitoring, so it's one thing to say, oh, I, I had these, this, you know, GPA last semester, that seems old and outdated, but you're looking at it really in the moment, and I think that's what matters, right? So that means we're not only connecting with the student, but we're addressing the needs right away, as opposed to, you know, given, taking a whole semester off and maybe they would miss out and maybe we would miss out on connecting with them. So I, I really applaud the work you've done on this. I think it's great.
Monique?
So thank you for explaining all of this, because I, I do believe that it is extremely complicated and, um, and I think, um, for some, um, it, it feels like there's a, uh, the accountability of setting high expectations, especially, I think the opening, um, sentence was, you know, our, um, addressing the equity need, especially for the data that we saw, so our black and brown students. And so for some, it, it takes that away, like they're, because we know that no matter what, no matter what activity they participated in, and we've seen the data, they're still at the bottom. And that's what the requirement of a GPA, you know? So when the GPA was required for participation, even though they probably did better than those students that were not engaged, they, they were still at the bottom of the, the list of not achieving, um, at the same level as their counter-partners. So, um, so I do believe that there is, um, um, you know, some sort of relation to participation. I'm a strong advocate of that, um, but I don't think that's the, the fix. I think there's, it's more complicated than that. And, and I agree, I'm, I'm willing to see what works, um, but I also know that there's a certain population that definitely needs accountability. And so I'm concerned, because I'm assuming again that our biggest group, um, of those that participate in extracurricular activity are the athletes. I'm assuming that most students, and correct me if I'm wrong, that participate in extracurricular activities, participate in sports. Is that our highest number of par- student participants?
I can tell you, my, we're about twelve fifty unique individual students.
Okay. Okay.
All right.
So then, so last year, we had, we received a report of that number declining, right? Um, and we've, and, and our students were not, for whatever reason, that number over s- um, participation in sports was declining, and we're seeing that in middle school, too. And we know that in middle school, there's a GPA requirement for those, um, intermule and travel, um, sport activities. So, and I think I asked the question last year, um, do we know why our students are choosing not to, um, participate in sports? Is it because they're coming in not prepared academically, or are there some other issues? And I don't think we, I don't know if we have the data to that. Um, so there is, there is a concern that I deeply have of removing the accountability of maintaining a certain GPA, um, in participation and knowing that that may be the, the fix to more kids participating in extracurricular activities, because I don't think it's quite that simple. So I, I'm still on the fence with this, and I, and I think it might require, um, more conversation to how we got here, um, and, you know, how students are feeling about this. I had one student express to me that, especially at, an athlete, when they, um, think about participating at the next level, the college coaches know that if they're receiving a kid from Evanston Township, that child will be eligible. There's no if, ands, or buts, and they'll be able to maintain because of the rigor of what we give them academically here. And his experience with other athletes on his team is that the high schools have, um, not done an effective job in helping them remain eligible throughout their high school year, and so their vision, their, their academic vision for them after high school goes high school, junior, junior college prep school, and then college. Whereas if you're an Evanston Township High School graduate who happens to be an athlete, you know that the progression is high school and then college. And, and there's no midpoint of becoming eligible to then experience the college experience. So I would like to also see and understand, um, how we support our athletes for the entire year and not just when they're in season, because I know athletes do well while they're in season, and then when that season is over, they drop, and that's because that support isn't there and that expectation isn't there. So in order for me to, to fully embrace this, I need to know that we are fully, um, giving the support and the resources that are needed for our students to be successful throughout the entire year and not just during in-season. So that's a lot, but that's how, um, you know, that's how I feel.
Yeah.
And it sounds good, and I'm all for equity and more access and everything, but I just want to make sure we're not being quick about how we do this, um, you know, under the name of equity.
Yeah, and, and let me just acknowledge that. I appreciate what you're saying and the time that you've spent to do that, because the four of us, six of us, seven of us, with Nick Gale, our fine arts chair, and some other APs, we spent hours and hours and hours talking about everything that you just said, and trying to find the sweet spot of increasing access, but also maintaining high expectations, maintaining levels of accountability, and doing what's best for all of our students in-season, out-of-season, making sure that the students who represent ETHS are doing so in the best way that they know how, and that the backstory to whether they're performing, competing, and representing, that they're having the grades. And so, uh, this is what we came to, even after being on a philosophical spectrum of thought around what you're, what you're saying, and, um, we're committed to that. We're committed to the supports, and, uh, we're committed to the high expectations and the, and the accountability in this and what we're proposing.
June, did you have some more?
Thank you all for the presentation. Um, I have a couple of concerns. Um, first of all, I would like to say, yes, um, the research does indicate that the more involved a student is in the school community, um, that they have a tendency to do better academically. Um, I'm concerned, though, that this is lowering expectations for our students. Um, I'm also concerned, because we only have these students for a designated period of time, the four years, how prepared are they going to be to transition to post-secondary or even to a pathway that takes them straight to a career, uh, with the very basic skills? What happens with the student, um, that never is able to bring that GPA up and is able to continue to participate in sports? What message are we sending to that individual student and to our school community, um, in terms of our priorities? Um, so those are some of the concerns that I have, lowering expectations and the level of preparedness of these students to transition out of here and be successful, um, whether it be in higher education, or as I said, going straight to a, a career pathway. Um, because when they leave us, w- w- we're no longer around to support them like we want to. And, um, so I, I would like to see a little more in-depth, um, look at the supports, um, which are there. I think that's the constant that's already there, because we do, I believe, do a good job of supporting our students, but, I mean, we need to look at the whole, the whole picture. Classroom interventions for these students that are struggling, um, and, um, you know, I think we need a, I personally would need a closer look. I'm on the fence as well, uh, because of those two things, but, um, a greater conversation involving, uh, preparedness to transition out, what level of skills would the, do we expect these students to have? And also, um, just a greater look at, uh, tracking these students that are struggling and, and all year round, like Monique said, um, instead of just, uh, you know, spotty checks throughout the year when they play, um, sports. So, that's my concerns.
If I, excuse me, if I could respond to that? Um, I think one of the things that may have gotten missed, and I just want to lift it back up, is, um, what Ty was talking about in terms of the grade-level team, um, uh, interventions, the at-risk quote-unquote indicators. Those are something that do happen all school year and are independent of whether or not you're participating in an activity or a sport. And, um, I know you're, and you can speak to more about how that happens, maybe?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, thank you. I just turned the microphone on, and we were thinking the same thing. So I think we agree that we do not want to lower expectation, expectations, we actually want to continue to increase expectations, and we do that through that careful monitoring. And that includes looking at this and the at-risk indicators, right? As, as much as, as the term at-risk is something that I think can make us cringe, we recognize that there are early indicators that we are looking at in terms of our data sets, that, um, we have created new systems with the grade-level teams to catch earlier when students are starting to fall, not when they fall in, but when they're starting to fall. And that's something that's critical for us as we're creating new systems of implementation for this. Um, and that, those are weekly meetings with, um, the grade-level team members, with the psychologist, the social worker, the counselor, the dean, the academic advisor, really beginning to coordinate that, and then building that so that we are being inclusive of all student relationships. Who is the student engaged with? The coach, the sponsor, the teachers, so that we are continuing to monitor them and do follow-up plans. And so that's a piece of what we have been working on developing as well, because we agree, it can't be in isolation and it can't be a one-stop. It has to be boosters, and, and we know that. The other piece I was just going to mention is for our students who may be struggling, we know that sometimes the accountability of, we're all holding you accountable, your teacher, right? All those people you're connected to, your family members, all those people are holding you accountable, in addition to, you've got a sense of community. You belong here, and we're going to help you, and you're going to do this. And so we want to create that sense of expectation as well as that community belongingness.
Just a, a question in my mind, it would also be interesting to see the subgroups as it relates to the percentage of students in each groups that are ineligible, because from an equity lens, that's a concern, too.
Yeah.
You know, because when you talk about expectations, they should be at high across the board, across all demographic groups. So that's another, uh, aspect of the conversation that I would like to be involved in this ongoing discourse about this before we arrive at a decision.
So, oh, but. If I can lift one more thing up, too, and I, I don't know if Marcus or Pete, um, spoke to this, but we're not getting rid of a two-point-oh GPA, um, benchmark, right? We, we're, what we're asking for is the requirement to be removed, right? So that access can be, um, increased, but, um, for IHSA sanctioned sports and activities, the two-point-oh GPA benchmark would exist for, uh, an indicator that a student needs to be able to, um, have the academic interventions, targeted support. targeted supports, in order to be, you know, supported so that they can get up to that GPA. We spoke with Chris Livitino today, in fact. Does that mean that the student can practice versus, you know, participate on the court or in the field? And so we're really talking about it at that level. So there's the IHSA requirement in terms of being eligible to participate in the sport or the activity. But then there's also ETHS, ETHS has the desire to keep a 2.0 benchmark in place, you know, to strive for, that's the indicator that we want to at least have for, you know, keeping our expectations for academic support in place.
And I, I'm sorry.
I just want to say, it's really important, I think, to understand, and I think this is exactly what you were saying, Evangeline. I just want to make it, I want to underline it and make it crystal clear. What we're doing is reverting. We're not removing. We're just reverting to the IHSA standard. And that's what virtually every other high school does. You know, there may be a few out there like ourselves that were trying to do something different. But we've taken the close look, and we've decided that instead of helping our students, having, drawing the line and making a higher bar, making it harder for our students to jump over this bar, we've cut off a group of students from the ability to do the things which the research and our own staff understands to help them succeed. So we've, we're just perpetuating a spiral that is going in the wrong direction. And the point of, we're not removing anything. We are not lowering anything. What we're doing is sticking with the IHSA standard, which is what we have to do in order to compete in IHSA sports, because they're the governing organization, for better or worse, for the state of Illinois. And, you know, so I think we need to be really careful about how we phrase that. And this isn't a lowering or removing, or it is enabling our kids who were otherwise cut off, completely cut off. You can arrive here at a freshman, freshman year, really, you know, thinking, gosh, I'd like to try out for some of these no-cut teams, and we do have a handful of those. Or, I'd really love to join one of these quirky clubs we have going on, because I've got some, an interest in comic books or Quidditch or whatever. And we're saying, you can't do any of that. So, so just, you know, and then how do we expect that student to connect? I'm looking at you guys, you already know this. How do we expect that student to develop a support group among the adults in this building or their fellow students? Because they're not even having the ability to engage with fellow students in these environments. So I just, I want to underline all that. I, you know what, when I came into our meeting, I was, I had no preconceived notions around this policy change. I didn't have strong feelings one way or the other. But I've looked at it, I studied it, I'm on the policy committee. It seems to me it makes sense, and in the words of, I think Jonathan at the outset said, "Look, we need to give this a try." I mean, here's the deal, we haven't closed the achievement gap. Headline news, we haven't done it yet. So that means we still have to keep trying things. And this is one piece of that puzzle.
Well, you know, I'm glad that you're having the conversation about participation versus playing, because I think that's critical, and I think the nuances are critical to the population that you're talking about.
Yep.
I'm not opposed to kids having access to try out and to participate, but I feel a certain way of, if you're not achieving and doing what you need to do inside the classroom, you know, I don't know if you go out and represent Evanston Township on the playing field. So I think those conversations are important, and it's important to really determine what that means. And again, I want to remind us, we're talking about, we're talking about students of color, and we're talking about how we prepare them after life, after, after life at ETHS. And we also know that there are students that have made the decision not to be able to come to Evanston Township because they didn't meet the requirement to be able to play. And so, you know, we want to be mindful of that too, and they go to our neighboring schools, you know, and they play there. And then some of them graduate and go to junior colleges because they've never been held to a certain standard. So in terms of participation and GPA. So I know this, and again, I want to say that I am for access, but I also, of all students, but I think the, it's not, if you grappled with it and it was a deep conversation, it's just that deep. It's not that simple.
I'd like to, I'd like to provide a little context for everybody, because I think it's important to understand where we've been and what we're trying to do at ETHS. First of all, this rule was put in place back in the 90s. And that was back in the days where people thought if you added enough programs and if you made enough technical changes, and if, that you could legislate high expectations and excellence. And what we have proved over the years is you can't legislate excellence. If it were, let's not make it a 2.0, let's make it a 2.5. In fact, that's so good, let's make it a 3.2. It doesn't work. What we've been trying to do, and you saw some results of it tonight on that screen, is instead, change how we do business. What we're doing is trying to transform the outcomes and the education at this school by restructuring the school. We've said many times, we are examining policies, procedures, habits, ways of doing things that quite frankly have not taken us to the ultimate result that we want as a school. And so far, every time we have, instead of trying to legislate something, we have looked at, how have we been doing it and how do we restructure this in a different way? How do we approach the issue in a different way that's based on what we now know about how we communicate high expectations to children? How we communicate what this school is all about? How we communicate to children how they belong here and what they can accomplish? And every time we've done it so far, we've made more strides forward. Every time, for 10 years. Do I believe that this is a magic bullet? No, it's not. Do I believe that this is all of a sudden, this one transformation is going to change everything? No. But what I do know is this. If we get away from the idea that we legislate excellence to the idea that we restructure around, how do we create an environment and a culture where children understand what we expect of them? And they know we're with them, and they know that we're supporting them. They know that we continue to put all these different supports in place. And we, and as you heard tonight, and this was critical, what you heard, and that we have earlier interventions, that we change our own practice, that we don't just say 2.0 and then move on, but instead we say, we now have to look at each individual child, and we need to intervene even earlier with the array of things we have and things maybe we don't even have, so that they understand, but you can and will do better, and here's what, how, and also, this is the expectation. And so I would honestly say, we can keep on doing what we've been doing, and we can keep on doing what was put in in the 1990s, which was the common wisdom then, or we can take the approach we've been doing in recent years that says, let's take a different approach to how we do business here. And when we see that these extracurriculars are an intervention, and that we want to use them as an intervention to reach higher expectations, quite frankly, I not only think it's worth the effort, but I wouldn't be supporting and proposing this. And by the way, this didn't come from Eric. This was brought to Eric, who listened to it, who's thought about it, and said, "Oh, my gosh, we're on to something here." And so I even want to explain that. I have looked at this now, based on what others who are more closely related to it have said, and have said, yes, we have to change the way we do business, or we're going to keep getting the same results.
So for me, it was helpful to think about the current policy and the current practice and how that's impacting students, like all students, and their inability to participate in any sports or clubs. I mean, that was, that's disturbing to me. And what I heard you say, and Evangeline, thanks for talking about it more, is you're, the 2.0 is still important here, very important here. And I'm listening for what's changed, because it was always supposed to be 2.0, and then we implemented supports for students. But I think what was happening is the 2.0 became so, because it was the cutoff. And what I'm hearing, or at least what I'm understanding, is that it was the cutoff. So students then were told they couldn't participate. And then what happened to the supports when they were told that they couldn't participate? Did they not come? Did they become so discouraged or embarrassed that they just didn't try? I don't know. I don't know the answer to that. But I guess the change that I'm hoping to see is that we maintain the 2.0 with stronger supports, that we really support students, that it, that this, that, again, you know, we keep talking about how we change the culture, and we know how hard it is to change the culture. And what I like about this place is that we're not afraid of that change, even if we don't have models around us doing it. So this is another one of those times when we're out there on our own. But we've got, if we're going to do this, then I want us to really change the way we think about 2.0. So 2.0 means that we surround the students with everything we've got, and we have so much to support them in terms of their academic progress. And that's what I'd like to see.
I'm glad you said that. So just, you know, I want to underline something too, is that the academic monitoring happens weekly, right? So when we talk about using the 2.0 as a benchmark, if a student falls below that, you know, we've got stuff that's happening, supports kicking in place for that. I also want to make, draw a distinction, it's not a related point, but just a different point, that if you're in a co-curricular activity, there's no academic requirement for that. So you can have whatever GPA you want to have, and you can still perform and compete currently.
Yes, okay. Can I leave it with just one thing, because I have to say this? Anytime we have a line that we draw, if it's like, if it's 2.0, which is what it is now for extracurricular activities and sports, the folks that are most hurt by this are those below the 2.0. This shows up across research. Wherever a line is drawn, those who are just below suffer the most, because they suffer because they're excluded. So if we're saying we want to have an inclusive school, we want to connect kids to adults, we want to have a sense of community, and then we say in the same breath, "Yeah, but you don't have a 2.0, so you can't come." The cumulative effect on that on a child is devastating. And that's not just here, that's anywhere, you know, wherever you draw that line. Obviously, IHSA has to draw a line, we all want to draw a line. But I really love the idea of 2.0 wraparound support. I think that is, that is just brilliant. And, but again, just drawing the line on what we've, what we've done, you know, when we look at policies and we look at how they impact kids, and we come forth with changes to those policies, I really want us to keep in mind, not the students who are above the 2.0, we've got to keep them in mind right now, obviously, but think about the cumulative effect over, since the 90s, around students who wanted to participate in activities, but were told, no. We can remedy that in a very powerful way.
And going back to the grade level team indicators, I think it's important to also note that that's not just an academic flag, right? They look for attendance indicators, they look for behavioral reports. They look for, help me out, Taya.
Yeah, so we're looking at, there's a variety of flags that we actually utilize on a weekly basis, and then there are other flags that we know that may put students at greater risk than other students, students who have transferred in. We know what our data is about that, so we put additional supports in, students who may be McKinney-Bento status. So we're automatically going to be looking at the grades, we're looking at attendance, we're looking at possible behavior referrals or suspensions, so that we are doing that in an ongoing fashion.
Right. So again, going back to what the student said earlier about, we're more than just GPA, and looking at the whole student, and looking, you know, attendance is a huge part of this, and getting students to school and in-class, right, is a huge piece of this as well. If you have something to look forward to after school, right, that practice, that participation, that's huge.
Jonathan, just one last thing. I think that Jude made an important point in terms of what we're looking for when we're monitoring, especially, it has to be longitudinal. In other words, it's not just success if the kid gets to play that semester, they met that mark. It is, are they, you know, ready to go to work or to college? And so as we go forward with this experiment, really, I think it's, we really need to be looking to long-term results and not just short-term.
I think just to add to that, that's part of why we see this as one of many interventions, right, from all different aspects. So that's part of our emphasis, is this is one of many new steps that we want to take.
Jude?
Quickly, I just want to be on record as saying that this is thinking outside of the box. Indeed it is. And what we're looking for is achievement and holistic students. So I think, I do think it's worth a try. It's actually, is an intervention for those who manage to keep their GPAs above, at a 2.0 or above, because they want to play. So it's worth a try.
All right. Thank you so much for coming and helping us think this through. I realize the complexity here, and we're going to continue to think and talk about this. I kind of get that impression, so thank you, thank you so much.
And it's worth it.
It is.
Yeah, it's worth it. Thank you.
All right. So we have other policies. Dr. Beavis?
Oh, yeah.
We just, we just really, one. We've got, we've got a few more. Yeah. We, yeah.
Let me just, most of the, there is one policy I wanted, two policies I want to draw our attention to in the packet. Most of the policies that are here, we went over this in the policy committee meeting, they are minor changes, citations, some grammar, some usage cleanup. But I would like to draw our attention to, first off, 7275, orders to forgo life-sustaining treatment. We want, the committee, after discussion, wants that adopted as presented by IASB, but we do not want to include the optional language, which is a long list. So I just wanted to be clear, that's on the scorecard, which is the second, the second part of the...
And the reason for that is not that we don't necessarily want that sort of consultation to happen, we just don't want to mandate it in the policy.
Correct.
If somebody requests it, of course it would happen. I just want to clarify that.
That's right. Right.
And the final piece I wanted to go over is, there was some cleanup. We do a five-year review, and within that five-year review, we had achievements and awards, and I cleaned up some language around class rank. We no longer do class rank and found some references to class rank that I cleaned up. Any questions about any other policies that appear in the press issue 95?
I think we're good.
All right.
Thank you.
Just going to stay here.
Just stay right there. Just stay right there. All right.
All right.
Next item.
Next up is the Five Essential Survey. I can do the intro, since Dr. Wetherspoon is not here, but the Five Essential Survey, we administer the Five Essential Survey every, every other year as part of our state accountability mechanism. It gets reported as part of the state report card. And what we do, it's a student survey, a faculty survey, and a parent survey, parent guardian survey. We have, along with most of the state, I don't know if it's all of the state, but I will say along with most of the state, we don't get the parental response necessary for reporting. We were close this time, I think we were very close, so we're almost there, so in a...
Just shout out to parents.
Yeah.
Finish the survey for crying out loud, we would like to see the results. And we can't unless we hit 20%.
Yeah, it's not even...
Honestly.
It's getting better, though. It's creeping up.
It's not even that it's embargoed and we can't share it, just to be clear, we don't get any of it.
Right.
So that's, and we've actually mentioned that when we worked with U Chicago Impact, we're like, can we see the parent results? Because, you know, we contracted and worked with them, they're like, no, they're not available. So, you know, they're like, hit the target and you can get the results. So next time we give this survey, we will make an even bigger push, but we did show some strides. We showed some real strides in trying to get that number up. Joining me is Dr. Carrie Levy. Carrie's going to walk us through the, the results. And again, she's going to make, she's going to highlight some things. It's a very comprehensive report. When it is released, I encourage you to read through it. It's, it's interactive on the web, it'll be interactive. But really what we look is, we, we track things over time and that's the crux of the report, so that'll be tracking over time. And then I'll do a little bit about, around our work with U Chicago Impact and how we're, and how that, how that unfolded, and I'll, I'll talk a little bit about that. So Carrie, I'll leave it to you to jump through, I already loaded the PowerPoint, here we go.
Thank you. Good evening. All right. So this is our third administration for the Five Essential Survey. Illinois State requires that it's administered every other year to teacher, students, and parents. It's intended, the purpose is to provide schools with information for school improvement. And I'll talk about the five essential components around organization and climate related to improving schools in a moment. Our response rate this year was lower than the Illinois average, I did have a little error typo in, in the report, so it was lower than the Illinois average and a little lower than our last administration. So 72% of students took the survey and 72% of teachers, and then 19% of parents. So like you said, like Dr. Beavis saying, almost there. Almost, but not quite. Okay. So there are the five essentials, and for anyone who's not as familiar with it, and this is based on over 20 years of research from the consortium on Chicago School Research. There's effective leaders, where principals, teachers implement a shared vision, and this construct is based on responses from teachers, from the teacher survey. Collaborative teachers, again, this, this construct is based on responses from teachers, feedback in their survey. Involved family is also, this construct is based on feedback from teachers in the teacher survey about the entire staff build strong external relationships. Supportive environment, where a school is safe, demanding, and supportive. Most of those items come from the students, so this is feedback from students, and there's one construct in there that is based, that comes out of the teacher survey. And then similar ambitious instruction, where classes are challenging, engaging, that is feedback that mostly comes out of the students' survey, and then there's a little bit that comes out of the teacher survey that's built into this, this domain. So for example, and I, and I just have an example, but you can, is you, if you go through the website, which should be available around the time of the report card, within each domain, there are indicators. So under effective leaders, there are questions related to teacher influence, questions related to principal instructional leadership, questions related to program coherence, and then teacher-principal trust. And then within each of these are anywhere from three to eight questions. So that's how the survey is, is structured and, and when we get to play around with the website, you can see items under each of them in more detail. So ETHS is again considered organized for improvement. So the very first time that we administered this in 2013, we were moderately organized, and then in 2015, and again in this, this past administration last year, we are considered organized for improvement. And this is, our, our ratings across all the domains, so they, they rate you from most implementation, more average, less least, are consistent this year compared to the last administration in 2014, 15. So our levels of implementation are strong for ambitious instruction and involved families, those are our strongest. We're rating, rated on average for supportive environment and collaborative teachers, and then we have less implementation under effective leaders. And then this, I took this from the website, so I apologize if it's a little hard to see, but this just sort of breaks down each of the five domains, and you can see over our three administrations how it looks. So you can see for this one and then the one, it's how consistent it is compared to 2014, 15, both are up from the first time we did this. So this is just a brief description of each domain. And do you want to talk about the management team?
So one of the things we did prior to this administration, I have to understand, we administer this every other year, typically, a lot of, you know, the elementary districts typically administer this every year. So in working with U Chicago Impact on strategic planning, we were working on a two-year timeline as opposed to a one-year timeline, so we have to keep that in mind. So what we did is we met with, as a management team, a few times with U Chicago Impact, and we really targeted communication as one of the things we were going to work on. Specifically, you know, how decisions get made and how to communicate things very clearly to our, to our staff. As part of that, we did a little book study, we read Brief, and the leadership team read Brief, and we read Decide and Deliver. You may have seen Decide and Deliver in some of the presentations I've given to the board where I talk about the rapid approach, recommend, agree, perform, input, and decide. You may see that, you know, when it says like, the board gets to decide new courses, they're the decision maker in that, you've seen that before. Our staff gets that as well, when I send out like, what the new course process is or what the textbook adoption process is. So that came directly out of this work. The idea was to really give our, our staff the clarity around those aspects of the work. You know, who is the, who, who makes the decisions in, in, in different aspects and how is that communicated? We looked at different levers and targeted those to improve results, those were, those were what we worked on, and we saw some growth. Now, we haven't done the post-evaluation, we haven't sat down with U Chicago Impact and kind of gone through these results, because again, we're on a two-year cycle and not a one-year cycle. But we will schedule that debrief and then we will strategize for the next go-around to see what other areas we will target for improvement. We typically work with two consultants from U Chicago Impact, they come out, and it's a, it's a four to five meeting cycle. We did, and we're on the final, the final piece of that cycle right now.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Questions, comments from the board? Anybody? Jonathan?
If you look at this, this issue of effective leaders, it really does come down to this communication between management and teachers. And it's a pattern, we also saw this in the communications audit that we had, we, we had similar kinds of results. And it, from, from what I could glean from that, it's not just about how decisions are communicated, but how decisions are made. And, and a sense, I mean, obviously, you know, management or in some cases, the board makes the final decision. But there does, this, it does seem to be a persistent issue with the faculty of a feeling of not sufficient input before decisions are made. And I realize that's a long-term issue and it's probably something that is always a concern of teachers and probably always will be. But I, and I know that their efforts, you know, there's this action plan, and do you feel like you've seen results yet from the action plan, or do we expect some more results from the action plan in the near future?
So, so it's interesting, because I, I just pulled up the, the long-term sort of looking at that measure, effective leaders, going back to 2013, just to put it in perspective, we scored a 13 back then, and we're at a 27, so we're, we're headed, we're not, we doubled, but we're not, we have a long way to go. But, you know, this is one of those things that needs to be persistent, it needs to be the front of the mind, it needs to be included in our communication. I think one of the things that has gone, that has been very helpful in communicating to staff is our, you know, in the last couple of years, our opening day with staff, we've had Dr. Campbell give a, sort of a connect the dots kind of a, a talk. In fact, it was one of the highest rated aspects of the institute day last, I think it's the third year in a row we've, we've done that. But again, it's things like that, opportunities to do that really, really help in that area. But they need to be persist, we need to be persistent and consistent and, and thoughtful.
You know, 13, 27, next time 40, right?
There it is. I like the way you think.
What do you have in place, what type of system do you have in place currently to solicit teacher feedback?
It really depends on what we're doing. You know, if we're looking at textbook adoption, that's a really, that's really teacher-driven, teacher and departmentary-driven. Course revisions, when we work on revisions and we do our summer work to the curriculum, that again is teacher-driven with, with administrative leadership, right? I mean, you know, you set the framework and then folks have input on that. We also do, there, there are several surveys go out, mini-surveys during the course of the year on different things, we get input that way. We have a curriculum forum. Moving forward, what we're going to do, drum roll, we're actually going to do a curriculum review. We're going to hit pause on some of the work we're doing around like new courses. We added 38 new courses in the last four years, and we've done over 80 revisions. So we're going to hit pause, we're going to reflect, we're going to put equity front and center, we're going to isolate race, we're going to look at achievement, we're going to integrate student voice, and we're going to develop a curriculum review process that is department-specific across the building, and it's going to be a multi-year system so that that'll be more streamlined, but that'll put student voice and teacher voice front and center in that process. Along with looking at, I mean, along with the, the more technical aspects, which are standards align, you know, the typical curriculum review would be standards alignment, assessment, data, grade trends, we're going to do all that, but we're going to also integrate student voice, we're going to isolate race, and we're going to look at not just the data around that, but actually do some focus groups and partner with some external partners, and Dr. Campbell and I have been talking about that.
And let me add to that, with the ratification of the last teacher contract, we are creating a new structure for teacher administration, communication, and feedback to be chaired by Bill Farmer, TC president, and myself, or TC president and assistant superintendent principal. And that is hoping to foster more feedback and communication with TC and with the administration. For example, there are 113 committees in the school, right? So we're trying to also use that as a mechanism so that teachers can know how to be involved, know what committees they can be on to get their input.
Just one follow-up, so they would, currently do teachers also, do they have some type of voice and input regarding professional development, time for collaboration, teacher collaboration, and things of that nature, other than curriculum?
Yes, we have all of that in place.
I know that we spent some time a few years ago talking about this survey and how we can get information from parents, how we can get the survey from parents. We came up with some lofty ideas. I'm, I'm happy to see the number getting closer, so maybe next round, we'll reach that magic number.
Yes, we will continue our efforts, all of our efforts to reach out, and, and our communications office has been amazing in helping us with that. The only thing I would, I would caution is we do want those results, but 20% is, may not be reflective of our, of our community also.
Our whole community.
So, so that's just the caveat, like, we would love to see our parent results, but then also with an understanding that not, may not reflect our population.
And I'd just like to make one last connection to Goal Two, because I can't let Goal Two, Goal Two go tonight. Some of the information gleaned in this survey, particularly the student survey, there's supplemental questions that, that, that will inform our reporting on Goal Two. We've been looking closely at that to see, see what's there. And there, there are some, some responses to some items that could be very helpful in measuring Goal Two.
Monique?
Yeah, I can't remember what interventions we put in place to reach out or to reach more parents. I can't remember what we said we would do that we hadn't done before. But I, I agree with you 100% that even at 20%, it may, it may not be representative of the, the students and the parents that we serve. So I'm, I guess I'm suggesting, suggesting without even knowing, that even our interventions of reaching out to parents are very creative, you know, and, and thoughtful in terms of how we do that going forward, so we get maybe a better cross-section of, of surveys from parents and the representation that we serve. So I don't, I don't know what we've done.
We, I know we looked at what we did for the prior administration, we increased our outreach, so we got inched up a couple more percent. We will do that again next time around, look at what we did this time. They did move the survey up in the school year, so last year, they, for the first time, they administered in, in the November to December, January window, where it was always between January and March. That may have helped a little bit. The information was kind of sent out a little bit last minute, so we may have more opportunities to, to reach out to parents earlier. They sort of threw that change to us at the beginning of last year, which is fine, we, we, we manage that, but knowing that that's when they're going to do it, we may be able to plan accordingly and just do more outreach earlier. But we will certainly look at what we did last time and see what we can do more of or differently for next time.
Do, do we, do we keep track of the demographics of the, the surveys that we get back so that we don't, we know?
We don't, they collect that information. That's not collected in the survey.
Other questions? Thank you again. Dr. Beavis, thank you.
You're welcome, and I'll, let me just load up the next PowerPoint.
This is definitely the Dr. Beavis night.
All right.
But in a few minutes, we'll turn it over to Mary Rodino.
So those of you familiar with this presentation, it goes about an hour and it's on summer proj, no. The, the, every year we do summer projects, and I provide a brief report on summer projects. This is going to be the briefest of brief reports, I'm obviously available to answer questions, but why don't we go through this? Focused and sustainable, I think, is the theme, given the, the budget situation that, that we were entering in this summer. Just a little background, our summer projects are always aligned to district goals, primarily district goals one and two. This year, we had 100 teachers participate in summer projects, they did 42 projects and we came in under budget. We worked on curriculum development, assessment writing, standards alignment, and we also were able to run Chrome Camp for professional development. And this is just, this isn't everything we did, again, these are just the highlights. We revised, new and revised courses, we did a lot of work on our civics and sophomore curriculum that are now being implemented, along with our forensics curriculum, and elementary, college algebra, which is our dual-credit, another pathway to college with Oakton, it's the 070 class, it's the, the class that's a non-credit-bearing course at Oakton, but it's the biggest barrier our students face when they enroll in Oakton is to get past that class to credit-bearing courses, so we are going to offer that, we're offering that right now, and we did summer work on that curriculum, you know, what it is, we familiarized our teachers with it, did some professional development, so they're up and running. We did assessment writing, again, geometry, regular, and honors, sophomore English, civics, forensics, we could go down the list, we did a lot of, a lot of our time went toward assessment writing. When I say assessment writing, I mean everything from the development of rubrics to the development of semester exams and to other ways of tracking student growth. and to other ways of tracking student growth. Uh, standards alignment, I just put two up here, because one is, you know, geometry, which is the, which is our, you know, common core state standards. We could easily have put, uh, our sophomore English up there, or our senior English, uh, and I put forensics up there, because that's, uh, NGSS, which is the, uh, science standard, so I just went, kinda wanted to, to include both of those just as representations of the work we did over the summer. There's Chrome Camp, I really love the logo, so we'll keep that up there for a second. Um, moving forward, we'll continue, we're gonna do the curriculum review process I, I hinted at earlier. Uh, that will really drive new courses and revisions, the findings from those curriculum reviews, which will be, will take place within departments. It's a multi-year process, we're gonna be developing the process, we'll, we'll start that process actually with teachers' second semester and into the summer. That'll be a bulk of the summer work, there'll be written reports, and then that will inform the work of the departments, uh, in terms of curriculum work. You know, we'll be able to identify what courses need more assessment writing, what the vertical alignment pieces are, what kind of professional development we need, and, uh, we'll be able to target our budget to those needs. And here's our spending, in 2013, we spent a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, we did twenty-seven projects, and it was four thousand six hundred and forty dollars per project, and you see this past, uh, summer, we were able to do forty-two projects for eighty-six thousand dollars for two, you know, and that's about two thousand dollars per project. That's simple math, I call that simple math, but, you know, Mary's looking at me, she's like, that's probably not the best way to do that. Well, you know, I just, my per, per, per project was just a straight division piece, so you can get at that by dividing eighty-six thousand by forty-two. But the point is, to this slide is, we've been able to bring down the total cost, and we've been, been able to bring down the per-project total, uh, per-project piece. We've done that by putting caps in, we have a revision cap of thirty-two hundred for new courses and, uh, substantial revisions, and a general course revision cap per project of twenty-four hundred dollars. Uh, we knew that, we, we started these caps a couple of years ago, and we've, we've been able to really curtail our, uh, the cost of summer projects. We have some, really, get some really nice summer projects, very productive summer projects within budget, so, there you go. Thanks.
That's beautiful.
Thank you.
Mary may not like the way you did that, but. That, right, I know, that's like, under budget, is that what you said, I love, love those words, okay, any questions? Beautiful, thank you, I think you can go back to your seat now. Can you go back to your seat? Yes, you can. All right, we're at item number ten, and Dr. Witherspoon is going to do this.
Well, as you're going to hear in a minute, this is starting to become an annual event.
Yeah.
Uh, but, uh, what a great annual event, and that is, uh, a couple of, uh, very important, very prestigious budget, uh, and finance awards that we, uh, have won and been presented again at ETHS. So I'm gonna ask Mary Rodino to come up here and stand, because I'm gonna present, uh, both of these awards to Mary. Uh, they are clearly awards to the district, but without, uh, a chief financial officer and a business office, uh, to, doing the great work they're doing, we would not have these awards. And, uh, so the first one is, uh, the ASBO International Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting for Fiscal Year 2016. And I'm just gonna read, uh, what it says about this award, these are very short, uh, but, uh, to Mary and your staff in the district, the Association of School Business Officials, ASBO International, has awarded Evanston Township High School District 202 a certificate of excellence in financial reporting for having met or exceeded the program's high standards for financial reporting and accountability. I, I think it's important to know that for over forty years, this, uh, uh, award has honored school districts for, that really demonstrate excellence and best practices in financial reporting. Uh, approximately sixty of the over eight hundred school districts in Illinois have received this award this year, and, um, we first achieved this award for the very first time nine years ago, we had never received it before then, and this is the ninth consecutive year that the district has won this award. So Mary, congratulations for this one.
Thank you.
Don't sit down. Uh, the other, yeah, really. Uh, the other award is, is the GFOA Distinguished Budget Presentation Award, and, uh, in fact, we're gonna have one of those budget presentations tonight. So it, it's, uh, timely to say the least. Uh, but GFOA is the Government Finance Officers Association, uh, this is a national organization, as is ASBO, by the way, um, and it has awarded, uh, Evanston Township High School District 202 the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. In order to receive this award, an entity must satisfy nationally recognized guidelines for effective budget presentation. Now, when I mean that, it's not simply Mary's genius in sitting up at the table and presenting, it's actually how the budget is published and, and presented as a document. In our case, it's become a virtual document, it's online, you have it, you're gonna be looking at it tonight, uh, but it, it is meeting very high standards on how you not only construct a budget, but how you communicate a budget, and how the community, as well as the, obviously the governing board and others, is able to actually examine that budget, uh, in a very transparent way, and understand how it functions in relation to the district goals and, and the values of the school district. So it's a little more than just doing numbers, or a little more than, than doing a PowerPoint.
In three hundred concise pages.
Yeah, in three hundred concise pages tonight. Uh, uh, and just quickly, uh, then, uh, this is a very prestigious policy document. Um, the district had never, uh, achieved this until nine years ago, so we did get it the first time nine years ago, and low and behold, for the ninth consecutive year, we have been awarded, thank you, Mary, this budget award. Congratulations. And you better get your picture taken. This is important.
Okay. You hold the heavy one.
All right. We're, we're glad to take the time. Does she get a pin? And board, that concludes the presentation.
Thank you. Awesome, great.
The one is really heavy.
Right, one is heavy, okay, well, congratulations, Mary, and to your team and your department, thank you so much. Not something to take for granted.
No.
It's very, very amazing, nine consecutive years.
Yeah.
That's really, that's awesome. All right, so, um, item number twelve, comments from the public, Dr. Beavis, do we have comments?
Yes, we have, uh, one person signed up for comments, Vanessa, I believe it's, uh, McCoy, it says. Uh, yeah, I'll, so, uh, there's a podium, um, and, uh, public comment is, uh, three minutes, I'll time it, I'll let you know when you're getting close, and then I'll, I'll let you know, finish your sentence.
All right, it's regarding the, um, ensuring equitable, you know, what they talked about earlier, in extracurricular activity participation. So my name's Vanessa Johnson McCoy, um, I actually just came to the meeting, I didn't plan to speak, just because I said I'm gonna start coming to hear what's going on, um, but that conversation kinda just sparked something that I wanted to share. So I'm a class of eighty-six alum, and I do agree that extracurricular activity participation increases student engagement. I was a cheerleader for like three years and did student government and all that, and so, but I want, and, and that actually helped me get into U of I, because the other topic you talked about, ACT scores, I didn't score the best, but I had excellent grades, I was an honor student all four years, and, um, because of the extracurricular activities, I was able to put that into my essays, and so it kinda overshadowed my, not the greatest ACT score. But, so I said all that to talk about my son's experiences with extracurricular activities. So, um, my older son is, was a class of twenty-ten grad, uh, class of twenty-ten, and he played basketball his freshman and sophomore year, had an incident with the coach, and then, uh, didn't try out his junior and senior year, and as a result, got kind of, um, engaged with some friends that weren't the best friends. I mean, he still went on to, to go to college and graduate, but it just, I think, went downhill as a result of not having that structure with, uh, I mean, he's still got good grades, but I was expecting him to make the National Honor Society, and he didn't. Um, he's still got good grades and got to college, all that and whatever, but now I have my second son, who, um, is a sophomore this year. So he was, um, his grades are excellent, and I'm bringing this up to look at the other end of the, um, perspective, I guess, is, you know, when there's a line. So when you have a good student academically, um, but their athletics, he li, likes basketball too. Well, he tried out for the freshman team, and, um, he was told that he didn't make it because the coaches didn't know him. So my son is, um, just to put context to him not just being a, a good student academically, he was awarded the African-American Achievement Award, so out of all the freshmen, um, he was the African-American male to be chosen out of all of them, so, um, it, it's just not for academics, it's for character, leadership, civility, scholarship, community service, and sportsmanship. So on the other side, it's, um, it's, so some of his friends made the team, but they weren't even able to play because they were academically ineligible, um, while he was, you know, crushed that he did not make the team, but he's an outstanding, you know, student and child, and I'm not just saying it because of me. But anyway, um, my point is just that I would ask that you consider, and I don't know what the process is, if you're gonna take that into consideration, what they're saying, or if you vote on it, or whatever, but I would just ask that you also think about those on the other side, that they're excellent students, but yet because the coach doesn't know them, um, and so his skills, I'd say in basketball, might be like a seven, so he's not like a ten, but, um, definitely has skills, had played in junior high, and it's my time up?
Yeah, you finish your sentence.
Oh, okay, had played in junior high, but, you know, just to consider that by reducing the, well, you're saying it's not a reduction, but to me, if you only have to pass five classes, if that's a D, then that sounds like a reduction to me. But anyway, so I'm just asking you to please consider the opposite, and that those students that are doing well academically, yet they might need a little bit more coaching or whatever on the skill side, so, um, that's really all. Thank you.
No, no further comments.
Thank you, thank you, all right. So, um, FOIA, do we have FOIAs, we have one, I see?
Uh, we do have a FOIA from Hellick, and, uh, the response is in the packet.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we're at Board Committee Reports, and I think we're gonna start with the student report, Emma.
So hello, everyone, um, just coming at you from a student perspective, the first two weeks of school have been quite eventful, um, and the freshman class is transitioning into high school, and the senior class is currently panicking about the transition. It's all in good time. The policy and procedures amended over the summer have had an overwhelmingly positive response. Um, the new dress code is cause for celebration among students. I've yet to hear a complaint, and the students feel the new language and purpose of the dress code respect individuality in the context of diversity. And not getting any complaints from ETHS students is really remarkable. But the students and recent alumni have called the dress code body-positive and even celebratory. Um, once again, ETHS has set an important precedent for edu, for equal educational opportunities regardless of body type, gender, or race. And the implementation of the updated procedures regarding transgender and gender non-conforming students is also a point of excitement for the entire student body. Ms. Patterson, the Physical Education Department Chair, did a wonderful job highlighting the specifics of the new procedures during an assembly in the first week of school, so I believe every student, um, was made aware of the changes in their PE period. Um, so I would like to address this year's focus on ending the systematic inequalities facing black male students. Um, after speaking to several female students of color, as well as the, as female faculty members, um, I mean to bring up the discussion of expanding the school to the intersection of race and gender. Um, so equitable education outcomes must account for the school's most marginalized students, um, and I believe that ETHS has the resources to fully acknowledge the disparities in all diverse settings. And centering the activist movements around the most vulnerable breaks down barriers impacting all students. So letting the 2017, 2018 school year commit to supporting all black students, specifically those impacted by both sexism and racism, um, and I look forward to listening to students and working with all of you to make ETHS an intersectional and supportive, as intersectional and supportive as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Emma. All right, wonderful, all right, Dr. Witherspoon.
Nice job, Emma. And away you go for the school year.
Here we go.
So, uh, I, uh, wanna highlight a few things that I wanna make, sure folks are aware of. Um, we are going to hold our open house this year, Open House Day, on Monday, September the twenty-fifth. So, uh, we'll be putting, we are putting out information about it, but I want folks to be alerted to that. So, um, adult family members have time this week and next week to RSVP for our school day open house, so just let us know if you intend to come, but, uh, you do need to get that information in, because there is a certain amount of preparation necessary for, uh, what numbers of people, uh, at what grade levels to expect. Also, um, uh, if you're not able to participate in the school day event, uh, you are, uh, very welcome and encouraged to attend the evening open house, and that's gonna be held the same night, the twenty-fifth of September, and that'll be from six to nine. And so, a couple of different opportunities for families, parents, uh, to come and experience ETHS and learn a lot more about what their own, uh, students are experiencing. Also, you can sign up for fall conferences that begin on Mon, uh, that signup begins on Monday, September twenty-fifth. Um, and, uh, on Open House Day, the Welcome Center computers will even be available for people who would like to sign up online while they're at the school. Uh, and conference signup ends on October fourth at three o'clock in the afternoon, uh, because, I think these are a little out of order. Well, I'll, I'll get to it, 'cause I don't know where it is. Don't worry, I'm coming back to it, I'll connect the dots. But other, uh, upcoming events are then, uh, this Wednesday, September the thirteenth, we have a Family, Family Action Network presentation. Uh, Jasmine Ward, a bestselling author, is going to be talking about her new book, which is Sing Unburied Sing. And this is at seven o'clock PM Wednesday in our auditorium. Our first campus tour day is coming up on Saturday, September twenty-third. Uh, these are open to perspective, uh, or new, uh, ETHS families, uh, community members, business owners, and anybody who just wants to be sure they realize what a fantastic, awesome, great, spectacular, unparalleled, uh, remarkable place ETHS is. Uh, that wasn't in my notes. Uh, and, and so they're very, uh, much encouraged to go online about Campus Tour Day, Saturday the twenty-third. YAMO is back for the fall of 2017, and this is the sixtieth year of this iconic production. Um, I'll just make note that tickets are on sale, um, now, uh, you can get them online, and the shows this year will be October sixth and seventh, October thirteenth and fourteenth, October nineteenth, twentieth, and twenty-first. Uh, I wanna remind folks, uh, if they're not, uh, haven't tried before and not familiar, many of these shows will sell out, uh, literally. So don't be disappointed, get online now and get your YAMO tickets. But in case you miss that, uh, we're also, because it's our sixtieth year, on October fifteenth, uh, which is a Sunday, our Educational Foundation is going to host a one-day-only matinee show, which is called Showcase ETHS, A Tribute to YAMO's Sixtieth. And this is a special production in which alums from all these years are gonna be coming back and putting on an extravaganza in the auditorium, and, and I'm gonna predict that by the time we get to that date, seats will be very hard, I mean, I might get that by the time we get to that date, seats will be very hard, I mean, I might get an extra ticket, I can scalp. Seats might be really hard to come by that afternoon, so it's a good time now to go online with our foundation. And in case you didn't think it was good enough, Tony Award winner Jesse Mueller, from the class of 2001, is going to be part of the showcase of YAMO. And she's opening again on Broadway within just a few weeks, so this is no small deal, I think then, oh, good, I'm almost to fall conferences that I was looking for a long time ago. Fall conferences are going to be held then on Thursday, October 5th, so that's why October 4th is such an important day to get your signup done, because the next day, they're held from 1:30 to 4:30, again, from 6:00 to 9:00 in the evening. And then October 5th is going to be a half-day for students who will be dismissed at noon. Friday, October 6th is a non-attendance day, and that's actually a Teacher Institute day, so just a few reminders. Finally, if you want to have a good time, and if the weather continues to be this beautiful, this Thursday evening is the Annual Kits, Cats, and Kids Block Party. It's held downtown, they close off Sherman Avenue, right in the heart of downtown, there's a grandstand, there's face painting, there's bands, there's entertainment. Dr. Witherspoon gives an exhilarating speech that you never want to miss, and that is this Thursday, beginning at 5:00 in the evening downtown. And I think I'll stop. That concludes my report.
Wonderful. All right, thank you, Dr. Witherspoon. All right. So the hearing for the 2017-18 budget for the Evanston Township High School is now called to order. The first order of business is the acceptance of the Notice of Publication.
Thank you, Madam President. On August 3rd, we published the Notice of Public Hearing for the final budget, and the Notice of Publication is included in your packet.
Can I have a motion to accept the Notice of Publication of the Budget Hearing?
Moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ball?
Yes.
Ball date?
Yes.
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 Yes, thank you. The next order of business is a short presentation of the budget by our CFO, Ms. Mary Rodino.
The operative word is "short," I know it's getting late. So the good news is, I scaled down the presentation a little bit, tried to make it a little more useful, and I would say it's a work in progress. So as I do these for you twice a year, I'm going to try to include some more graphics and a little bit less just kind of reading from the slides. So minor changes this time, but hopefully changes towards something that's a little more usable. Not that numbers aren't great, but not everyone loves them as much as I do. So this is the presentation for the final fiscal 18 budget. As you know, we've already started the year. The process, just again, for the new board members, is that we do pass the tentative budget in June, so that we can get the year started, and then schools will pass the final budget by the end of September, once a few of the items are a little better known. So we do have a few items that are a little better known, mostly positive, but bless you. So we're going to talk about an overview, then revenues, expenditures, look at the funds individually, just for a couple of minutes, and then talk a little bit about planning for the future, and you have the actual budget document electronically, there were some printed copies, for those of you who wanted it, and I'm always happy to print out copies for anyone who would want it later. We'll talk a little bit about the state budget, which goes along with some economic concerns. Okay, so I was able to change the slide regarding the state budget, because for three years now, we've been saying that they didn't have a budget. So they finally passed a budget, as you all know, in July, after starting what was the third consecutive year without a budget. And then in late August, they, the state approved SB 1947, which included a change in the school funding formula, which I know you're all just familiar with, kind of the headlines that we've all seen. It does include a "hold harmless provisions, so districts should not initially lose money," although depending on individual district's situations in future years, particularly attendance and some other things there, it's possible that districts may lose money. The general state aid is now combined with certain state categorical revenues, mostly special, a few of the special education revenues, and it's all labeled under what's called the New Evidence-Based Funding, or EBF formula. So I did some checking today, just to kind of see where we were with it. Those combined EBF numbers have been issued by the state. We have a spreadsheet on it that adds up all of those things for the past year, and then takes basically that similar number, and then divides it into 22 payments. They have, the state does what they call voucher. They voucher the payments, which means they sort of put them in line for payment. So three of those 22 annual payments have been vouchered, but not paid out yet, so we have not seen any money. But these are the payments that you hear in the news about schools not being able to start without those big payments from the state. Fortunately for us, it was not an amount that would cause us to not open, but, so those are in the state system, if you will, but we haven't seen any of the money yet. So nothing lately has been mentioned regarding property tax freezes or pension shifts, but what I just want to caution you is that there's no hard evidence that they are completely off the table, so for me, at least, they're always in the back of my mind. We did talk to you in June about those categorical payments that were due to us from fiscal 17, primarily those, the big dollars are really special education payments. What has happened since then is we received three of the four that were due for fiscal 17. That fourth payment is vouchered, but we have not seen the money, and so that's why we were really conservative in budgeting those revenues for this year, because we may find that they'll send out that fourth payment, but then again, we'll only get three or two of the payments for next year. And those are now wrapped up, most of them are wrapped up in that EBF funding formula that I spoke about. So our economic concerns, other than state issues, are primarily similar to what we talked about in June. We still have a low CPI, which is a blend of a CPI in Cook County that determines the increase in our property taxes. State and Chicago still have really low bond ratings, and eventually, that could affect some of the local governments and school districts. One piece of good news for us, I know the board received this information from the superintendent in June, late June, I think it was, the district's credit rating remains excellent, the highest you can get, and Moody's issued some positive comments on that, kind of a testament to what the district has done in spite of all the state and county issues. So into some of the numbers, our proposed overall budget is $84.3 million, and that is a 1.3% increase overall from last year's budget, and this includes all funds, so that includes things like capital and IMRF. And then we talk about operating funds, which are exactly what they're called, the funds that we really operate this entity out of, education, operations and maintenance, transportation, things like that. So that budget is $74.5 million, which is just under a 3% increase from last year's budget. The increases we see mainly are in personnel costs, contractual obligations, and positional placements. So going forward, we're continuing with conservative revenue estimates, particularly on those state revenues that we talked about. Like I mentioned, the general state aid will come in with some of those categorical payments. We did see some slight increases, healthy increases, I would say, in federal aid, and CPRT, which is Corporate Property Replacement Tax, which is a tax that is, I think I have a later slide on it, but it's administered by the state. It replaces an old tax that used to exist. But when you hear us talk about CPRT, that's what we are referring to, and that was actually up a good amount this year. So again, as I mentioned, property taxes will be a blend of the CPIs for two years, and we do have some expected new property in Evanston, which is usually the case, so that usually saves us a little bit, gives us a little boost and an increase. Just quickly, the point that I wanted to make on the EAV slide is that for the second time in five years, EAVs have been increasing. Sometimes we see those increase from the triennial reassessment, and sometimes it's just kind of economic recoveries that have happened over the last seven or eight years. Again, just final thoughts on revenues, we had no increase to student fees this year, we were happy to not ask for an increase. We did have a small increase in summer school, but that was it. So the main changes from the tentative budget in June to the final budget include an increase in the CPRT, E-rate revenue, which is when you all pay your cell phone bills and you see that universal service fee, thank you, you're sending to schools and libraries. It's kind of a national rebate program for technology purchases. So as technology purchases have grown, we've seen this grow, and it came in pretty high last year, so I wanted to change the budget to reflect that we do expect a healthy amount from that. Off the top of my head, I think it was about $120,000. And also several areas of nutrition services. When I budgeted those in June, I was really conservative, and wanted to really budget them based on where their revenues were at that point in the year, but we had some things that were, we hadn't really finished June at that point, and so when I looked at those revenues, again, in August, they were pleasantly over the levels that I thought they were, and so we went ahead and increased those revenue budgets for nutrition services, which I think is an area that we've been trying to increase for a while. And we had a pilot program this summer, some of you might remember, we supplied summer meals to the city of Evanston at all of their summer camp locations. It was a trial program, but the understanding was that it would continue if it went well, and it went really well. So that included one of our revenue increases. So this is a slide that you've seen many times, and it just doesn't change from year to year. 85% of our revenues are property taxes, and another 4% are other local things like school fees. So you're talking about almost 90% when you add the two together. So this is a new slide, I'm working on some of these things to give you some more visuals. I see now that the numbers are a little hard to read, but I just wanted to show you, this is the overall source of our revenues, and so along the bottom, we go from 2012 to 2018. And the orange bar represents local sources or property taxes. The blue bar is the state sources, and then the top kind of grayish bar is federal. So, I apologize, I'm just getting over a cold. So what you can see is that the state levels have remained sort of constant, but this year, when we budgeted them conservatively for 2018, the band is just a little bit smaller, while the federal piece is just a tiny bit bigger. So, you know, clearly you can see how dependent we are on local revenues, and I just wanted to kind of give you another visual of that. So we always do talk about values-based budgeting, and I just want you to know that we do think about it when we create these budgets, and we always try to minimize educational reductions wherever possible. And when possible, we do try to maintain some reduced levels that we established a few years ago, for things like contractual services, supplies, materials. But I will say, it's not always possible, I mean, we're always looking at those things, and we always encourage departments, even if you have a budget in those things, doesn't mean you have to take your expenses up to that budget, so we have those individual conversations often. When reductions aren't possible in some of those areas, we certainly, people have to really account for why they would need to raise those areas. So moving on to expenditures, again, this is a similar slide year after year. Salaries and fringe benefits are, sorry for the contrast there, but I think in total, they're about 75% salaries and fringe benefits of our total spending. No surprise, we'll talk about expenditures a little bit. Overall, with the final budget, having the increased revenue, we were also able to increase some of the expense expectations by looking at kind of where we were on those first payrolls of the year, and trying to adjust those budgets where needed. So overall, salaries increased about 4%, which is due to employment contracts and additional staff and expenses that come along with larger classes, like we've seen, including this year's ninth grade class. So that, the salaries are really related to those two things in, mainly. Sorry. Sorry, I skipped ahead. Okay. So this is a slide that I did condense, I had a couple of slides in the past that I would read one item at a time. So this really goes with the last slide that talked about the increase in salaries, so here's all of our other categories, and I just really wanted to summarize them for you instead of reading a bunch of numbers. We do have increases in fringe benefits, we have a decrease in supplies and materials overall, an increase in purchase services, so they kind of wash each other out, a decrease in capital outlay of just over 9%, that doesn't mean that we're not doing stuff, it just means that we had a really heavy year in fiscal 17, as far as the projects we paid for, which would have been the projects from the summer before. The good news is, we also have a 2% decrease in tuition paid to other entities, that's a pretty big number overall, so a 2% decrease is helpful. Less off-campus students, you know, things like that always help, and so we've seen a nice decrease in those. So just focusing real quick on the education fund, there was a 3.4% increase overall. This is by far our largest operating fund, and of course, where the vast majority of our salaries and benefits are held, and that typically would drive up the fund, as I said, negotiated increases and increase in FTEs for some of the student population. So again, this was an area where I had one slide for each fund, and it sort of drug on and on, so I thought I would just summarize it for you on one screen. The middle number is the approximate budget for fiscal 18, and then whether it's an increase or a decrease, and kind of a description of that. So operations and maintenance fund, where a lot of our staff are held, aside from the ed fund, a 2% increase is really good overall, on a fund that holds a lot of personnel. Tort, bond and interest, transportation, those are just sort of things that we use to deal with our everyday business. I think the highlight there is the transportation fund, where we're expecting about a 13% decrease. Negotiated good rates on bus service, sending less students where possible by individual taxi or van, and special education department has really worked on containing those costs. So strategies haven't really changed too much. Install capital expenditures that reduce costs when we can, you know, efficiencies with things like utilities and LED lighting. Continue to explore our off-campus special education alternatives. Consider some wellness strategies for healthcare cost containment. Healthcare costs are an issue for us, we're certainly better off than most, but we always want to try to address those things before they get out of hand. And if it's deemed as needed, we're always, you know, prepared to reorganize some tasks if we need to. So here's one other graphic, I see again that the fonts need to be a little bigger. This is an expenditure comparison by fund, so the orange bar is our education fund, which, as we all know, holds the majority of our expenses. The blue bar just above that is our operations and maintenance fund, and I apologize because the numbers on the side are not, not very visible, but I think the point of this slide is just, if you look at that bar as a whole, the education fund has really been constant as far as its level of expenditures compared to the whole. And all of the funds are relatively constant, the variable there can be capital projects from year to year, but I think it's important to note that we have not let costs in any one particular fund get out of control, so that's just what I was trying to show you there. So we always talk about a Plan B at the end of the presentation. You know, I think we have a lot more known than we did even in June, when we last talked about the budget, but I think, like I said, in the back of my mind, I just always want to think about a property tax freeze, or a pension shift, or a change in property taxes as some of the new legislation could allow for if the initiative has taken place. And if that happens, we would just have to look at a further reduction in expenses if something jeopardized our revenues. And that's it. So, questions?
I have a couple. So, a couple of points about Senate Bill 1947, and I don't know, it's now public act because the governor has signed it, I just am not sure of the number, but if you're looking it up, make sure you look it up by the public act number, whatever it is, because there were some changes, I think, from the, from the language, so if you're fiddling around for that exact detail, then make sure you get the right thing. I just wanted to highlight a couple of things there. First of all, I think the property tax freeze and pension shift are certainly floating around out there, but because we're around out there, but because we're now past the regular legislative session, and we have the veto session at the end of October, early November, and those dates have been set, I think we're going to be more comfortable, at least until the spring session reconvenes. So, I mean, far be it from me to predict these things, but typically in the veto session, it's not the time for introducing the new legislation. So that may get us past that. But within the school funding reform bill, I just wanted to highlight a couple of other things. This is sort of sneaking a committee report into your budget presentation that I think are relevant, though, to our consideration of the budget. One is this provision within the bill that allows for a local referendum to reduce property taxes.
And I bet that escaped a lot of people as they looked at it.
It hasn't escaped any school district's notice.
What I mean is, people read it, it's not obvious.
Yes. And I'm not highlighting it in a way that is trying to encourage such a referendum. There are some very, very strict limits on how that referendum can be instituted in terms of, you know, dollar amounts, timing, you know, there's sort of an eight to 10-month lead time on it, you can only do it every two years if it fails, blah, blah, blah. There are a lot of very strict limitations, but it's a terrible provision.
Agreed.
I'm just going to be absolutely clear about this. This is one part of the bill that is highly problematic for school districts, and I just want people to know about it, and I've circulated to the board and to the administration the talking points from EdRed around that referendum point. There are also some very tiny little provisions in the bill to allow for mandate relief, because school districts have long complained about the multitude of unfunded mandates that come down every single year from our state legislature. And some of those, I'm not sure that we're, that these are going to offer any real savings to any district, including ours, but one of them relates to PE waivers, and another relates to contracting out driver's ed. None of this stuff is going to make any sort of dent in a budget of our size. And then lastly, and this is a quirky little piece that I think we should be aware of, there's a severability clause in the law, and, you know, these are not uncommon in laws. This one says if any one provision of this law is declared unconstitutional, and there are already lawsuits that have been threatened, the entire bill goes under. So just something to keep in mind, that the entire thing could go under if there's a successful lawsuit. I mean, there are a lot of other little things, but I just, those are the few little bits that I wanted to highlight for people.
The one thing I wanted to say about, the one that certainly struck me first, was the provision for the referendum to reduce the property taxes. And the thing that really encouraged me is that we all know that our community was extremely supportive of district, I mean overwhelmingly supportive of District 65's referendum. So that helped me feel a little better about it, but there certainly are provisions in the bill that some of my counterparts are very worried about things like that. So it's always in the back of our minds.
I can see why. Others, Jonathan?
Mary, I'm glad you made that point about the District 65 referendum, because that made me feel better, too. I thought, well, this is not going to happen in our community, because, you know. And I do think, and I don't mean to be Pollyannaish about this, but I think things look a lot better. You know, we're always, you know, here, so gloom and doom, and it's bleak, and I'm not saying not to be prudent, but, you know, we dodged a bunch of bullets. We dodged the whole going after our TIF money, the pension shift, the property tax freeze, we got the hold harmless. I mean, things look a lot better now than they did a few months ago.
I agree. You know, it's my job not to be too optimistic, you know? So, but I think it certainly could have been a lot worse.
And I don't think the legislature wants to go back to the issue of education funding anytime soon.
Not right now.
I mean, I think that they're probably, I had one small question, which has to do with the hold harmless feature. So you said something about combining general state aid and categorical state aid. Does the hold harmless provision apply to both kinds of aid?
Those, you mean that I mentioned, the categoricals and the general state aid?
Both general state aid and categoricals.
Yes. So what we received from ISB is a very long spreadsheet that shows our general state aid. I'll just list quickly for you the other grants that are included, the English learner education, special ed personnel, special ed funding for children, special ed summer school. And so the total of those five grants are what they use as the base minimum funding, and that basically is what they then turned around and divi, so that was from last year. They turned that around and divided it by 22, and those are the individual payments that are set to come to us.
So they're using the 2016 figures for that, is that right?
Twenty...
1617?
It says, yes, 1617.
So I think there's some confusion, too, around that, which, what number, whether those are going to be the final numbers, or if it's going to be 1718?
Well, our 1718 payments will be based on that accumulation of the 1617 payments, and...
And then we're held there.
Right.
So that's my question. If it's, if there's a hold harmless, then why does the budget, our proposed budget say the total amount of state categorical aid for FY 2018 is estimated at $2,300,000, which is an 18% decrease from FY 2018?
Because there are other categoricals, and those are the ones that I talked about. So we still only got three of four in the other categorical categories. And so even though, even though they've calculated our allotments, and our 1718 payments are based on that, we're still waiting for one of the four of those payments that typically comes in in 1718, but is really for 1617. So for me, that's still a question mark. So, I mean, the worst ca, let's say, I say worst case, but what I mean is, the best-case scenario is that all of that money comes in, so what they still owe us from 1617, and what they allotted for 1718 based on those numbers. I'm not comfortable accounting that all of that money will come in, because it's the state of Illinois. So that's why we, you know, in June, we didn't know a lot of this, because so much was left unresolved, but when it came down to the final budget, am I really comfortable saying, oh, yeah, they're going to pay us everything that they owe us in the past, which would have come in in 1718, and these allotments, which will then come in? And I just keep hearing from too many people that one of those four payments will not materialize, and it's still not here. So, worst case, best case, I mean, I can come back and say we came in over budget, but it's Illinois.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary. Excellent.
Thank you.
Excellent job. And if we have questions in the future, we can come to you.
You know where I am.
I think, I think so. Thank you. All right. So, where are we now?
I don't think there are any comments from the public.
Yeah, next is the public comment portion of the budget hearing. I don't see any comments. So hearing none, I now declare this hearing adjourned. Thank you. The board will take action on the budget. All right. Okay, so now we are at our action section. And our first item is approval of the final fiscal year 2017-18 budget.
Move approval?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Lode.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Monsell.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. The next item is approval of the final Park School budget for 2017-18.
So moved.
Could I get a second, please?
I'll second it.
All right. I just wanted to highlight something on this before we vote. Some other, I think, good news, which is the tuition, the estimated amount from revenues from tuition from out of the district are up 9%, or about 100, more than $100,000. And I think that may be the beginning of showing some success from the outreach efforts that Park School has been making to recruit more students from outside our district. Just good.
That is good news. You're right. Thank you. Thank you for pointing that out. Okay, we have a motion on the table. Roll call, please.
Livingston.
Yes.
Monsell.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Lode.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, next item is approval of budget amendments from July 1st, 2016 to July 30th, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Monsell.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Lode.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Next item, number 20, approval of Title I district plan.
So moved.
Second.
Can I ask a couple of questions about this?
Certainly.
First thing, I like the part about how for Wildkid, both Wildkid Academy and Team ASAP, we're going to be tracking individual student success that is relatable to that and reporting that to, I assume, the federal government under Title I. Can we also receive, the board receive, when we, you know, those reports on the tracking the success of Wildkid Academy and Team ASAP? That would be nice. The other question I had, and this actually kind of relates back to our discussion about the Five Essential survey. One of the parts of the, and I appreciate your sharing the Title I, you know, details with us. The last question says, in the box below, articulate how the LEA consulted with the stakeholders identified above in the development of this plan. And at least in the version that we got, it's blank. I'm assuming that that isn't blank, but...
Why was I saying it hasn't been submitted yet?
No, it hasn't been submitted yet.
It hasn't been submitted yet.
It's been stakeholders from every place had to be a part of putting this plan together, so, yeah.
Kick out if we try to submit it.
Other questions? Roll call, please.
Parsons?
Yes.
Bond?
Yes.
Lode?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Monsell?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Next item is the approval of CLIC and liability workers' compensation coverage for fiscal year 2018. It's also in the packet.
Move approval.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Bond?
Yes.
Lode?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Monsell?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Seven Troy?
Yes, thank you. Next item is the Latino Heritage Month proclamation, and I think we're going to have it read by Lisa De La Fuente and Jude. We'll alternate paragraphs, and so we'll start with the Spanish.
Mes Nacional de la Herencia Hispana Latina, 15 de septiembre del 2017 al 15 de octubre del 2017. Considerando que los hispano latinoamericanos han hecho importantes contribuciones a este país, comenzando con el establecimiento de la ciudad más antigua de América, San Agustín, en 1565. Por los españoles, décadas antes de Jamestown, Virginia, a las familias que han delineado el carácter del sur oeste desde casi el final del siglo XVI, a los puertorriqueños y cubanos que han contribuido en las áreas de las altas, la literatura y el deporte desde finales del siglo XIX, y que han desempañado un papel vital en la creación y el desarrollo de la vida y la cultura de los Estados Unidos de los ciudadanos a nivel local y en el extranjero.
Whereas Hispanic and Latino Americans have made major contributions to this country, beginning with the establishment of America's oldest city, St. Augustine, in 1565 by the Spaniards decades before Jamestown, Virginia, to the Mexican families who have shaped the character of the Southwest since near the end of the 16th century, to the shaped, to the Puerto Ricans and Cubans who have contributed in the areas of arts, literature, and sports since the late 19th century, and who have played a vital role in the establishment and development of the life and culture of the United States citizens locally and abroad.
Considerando que la celebración del mes nacional de la herencia hispana latina comenzó en 1968, cuando el presidente Johnson aprobó una solicitud del Congreso para establecer una semana de la herencia hispana para reconocer y rendir homenaje a los aniversarios de la independencia de seis países latinoamericanos. Esto fue expandido para cubrir un periodo de 30 días por parte del presidente Reagan.
Whereas, the celebration of the National Hispanic and Latino Heritage Month began in 1968, when President Johnson approved a request by Congress to establish a Hispanic Heritage Week to recognize and pay tribute to the anniversaries of the independence of six Latin American countries. It was later expanded to cover a 30-day period by President Reagan.
Considerando que hay 50.5 millones de hispanos latinos que viven en los Estados Unidos.
Whereas, there are 50.5 million Hispanic and Latino, Latinos living in the U.S.
Considerando que los hispano latinoamericanos, específicamente del centro de México, han vivido en Evanston desde finales de los 50, y sus familias están mejorando la calidad de vida en esta comunidad.
Whereas, Hispanic and Latino Americans, specifically from central Mexico, have lived in Evanston since the late 1950s, and their families are enhancing the quality of life in this community.
Considerando que los estudiantes y personal de la escuela preparatoria del municipio de Evanston deben continuar aprendiendo y ser conscientes de los hispano latinos a nivel nacional y local que han trabajado para servir el bien público.
Whereas, the students and staff of Evanston Township High School must continue to learn about and be mindful of Hispanic and Latinos on a national and local level, who have worked to serve, to serve the public good.
Considerando que la comunidad de ETHS debe dar la bienvenida y aprender de todas las personas de color para apoyar la destrucción de creencias y prácticas que segreguen racialmente y impiden a los estudiantes creer que el sueño americano es para todos.
Whereas, the ETHS community should welcome and learn from all people of color to support the destruction of beliefs and practices that racially segregate and hinder students from believing that the American dream is for everyone.
Considerando que la comunidad de ETHS continuamente también debe dedicarse al principio de justicia igualitaria para todas las personas, estar eternamente vigilante contra los actos de racismo y intolerancia, a continuar siendo un líder en el fortalecimiento de todos los estudiantes a través de la educación.
Whereas, the ETHS community should also continually dedicate itself to the principle of equal justice for all people, remain eternally vigilant against acts of racism and bigotry, and continue to be a leader in... and continue to be a leader in empowering all students through education.
Por lo tanto, nosotros la junta escolar del distrito dos cero dos proclamamos que en celebración del excepcional pasado, presente y futuro de los líderes hispano latinoamericanos, por la presente proclamamos el quince de septiembre del dos mil diecisiete al quince de octubre del dos mil diecisiete como el mes de la herencia hispana latina en la escuela preparatoria del municipio de Evanston.
Therefore, we, the District Two-O-Two School Board proclaim that in celebration of past, present, and future exceptional Hispanic and Latino American leaders, and the valuable contributions of the Hispanic and Latino community, do hereby proclaim the September fifteenth, twenty seventeen, through October fifteenth, twenty seventeen, as Hispanic Latino Heritage Month at Evanston Township High School.
Thank you, both of you, Lisa, Jude, I appreciate it, thank you both. All right, can we have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Wilday?
Yes.
Yes.
Monza?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Bond?
Yes.
Savage, Williams?
Yes. All right, the consent agenda, which consists of approval of s- of sound-absorbing finishes for fine arts music rooms bid, treasures report from July two thousand seventeen, approval of bills, personnel agenda, which includes appointments to staff, certified special staff, nutrition services, safety, change in status, educational, overloads, stipends, mentors, FAS honore- honore- honor- I can't say the word, honorary, it's too late, maternity, paternity leave, certified engineer, support staff, retirement, paraprofessional, resignations, certified support staff, nutrition services, and coach.
So moved. Oh, is it?
Is that, is that it?
Thank you.
That's it.
That's it.
Move approval?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Livingston?
Yes.
Monza?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Bond?
Yes.
Wilday?
Yes.
Savage, Williams?
Yes, thank you. Um, so, um, we had, we're at old business and new business. Does anybody have any old or new business to bring up? Hearing none. Um, let's do a quick polling of the bo- of the board. I think this is our first time together, so, uh, anybody, any closing statements from anyone? Jonathan?
I've, I'd like to pick up on what Emma reported. It seems to me we've done some remarkable st- things for our students of this school in the last few months, and, you know, she mentioned most of them. I mean, began with protecting our undocumented students, and we know how important that is, especially now, giving equal rights to our transgender students, and developing a new gender-neutral, student-respectful, uh, dress code. And I think what's really important about all of these is not just what they show about our values, but they show how we listen to our students, because every one of these originated with students and came to us up from the students, and so I really think they're testament not only to what we believe in, but that we, we listen to our students.
Thank you. Anybody else? I would just like to add, um, how important these things are, especially in the climate and time that we live in. It's extremely important for us to think about how we can be proactive in, um, making these statements. They're very important for us to put that out there, and, um, I think we're such a key part of the Evanston community. Folks listen to what we're saying and what we're talking about, so, um, these things are extremely important. I'm very proud of this school, um, even though, um, upset about a lot of things that are happening. I'm still very proud of what we're doing here. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.